The call order this evening of Recreation Park District is Wednesday, April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. That's six thirty-two.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome to the podium this evening to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, Rancho Cordova City Manager, Michael Hunter.
Hey. Thank you, Danielle. We'll interview you on this side of the. Thank you.
We don't go away.
Oh, yeah.
I just wanted to give a little background on MICA. So MICA is the new Rancho Cordova City Manager. In this role, MICA oversees the daily operations of all city departments and staff and helps the future, helps to further the city council's goals and initiatives and plays an active role in municipal government by touching the day-to-day lives of people who live, work, learn, and play in Rancho Cordova. MICA is focused on regional and local development partnerships and projects to create new economic development opportunities, investing in technology to improve city services, and ensuring the public safety of Rancho Cordova. MICA previously served as the Deputy City Manager for the City of Rancho Cordova, where he was responsible for overseeing some of the larger city projects such as the Mills Crossing Civic Center, as well as key programs, divisions, and departments, including the Community Enhancement and Investment Funds, Facilities and Housing Division, and the Community Development and Economic Development Departments. He also serves as the Director of Economic Development for the City of Stockton in his previous role, where he was responsible for economic development, housing, and homeless initiatives, real property, venue management, and parking operations. Prior to the City of Stockton, MICA was the Economic Development Manager for the City of Rancho Cordova and a Senior Project Manager for the City of Sacramento. And this is my favorite part. So a fun fact about MICA, his favorite quote is, "Be the change you wish to see in the world," not God be. So thank you, Mike. I'm really looking forward to working with you. Congratulations on your promotion to the City Manager, and we're looking forward to many years ahead in partnership. So thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for having me. Really look forward to all those future years and all that we can do again. So we could have shortened that bio though, somehow. All right, roll call.
Thank you. I just want to welcome the public onto our call and announce for the record that we have two members of the public are on the Zoom call this evening. Director Mattis.
Here.
Director Langin.
Here.
Secretary Sloan.
Present.
Vice Chair Danzel.
Here.
And Cherry Yearwood.
Here.
All right. Be to comment by the public on non-agenda items.
Thank you. Members of the public may address the board on district topics not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It's a violation of state law for the board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Or members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the manager's staff. At this time, I do see one request for comments. And Cherry, you're back? Please go ahead.
Thank you. My comment is that I attended my grandson Zachary's seventh birthday party at Lincoln Village on Saturday, and the park looked great. The picnic area was clean and ready for us, but it's not wheelchair accessible. And unfortunately, I'm still stuck in a wheelchair. So I'm wondering if that picnic area, which is right next to the senior center, is on the ADA plan for an accessible path? Or if not, maybe why not? And I'm assuming that perhaps General Manager Larkin could help me with that, either here in the meeting or a later contact.
I will be happy to reach out to you at a later time. Thank you, though, for bringing it to our attention.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Cherry. All right, we'll move on to the consent count.
Thank you. Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and would be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. Each person will consider any request for discussion on the items prior to approval of the consent calendar. And this evening, we have twelve items for your consideration.
And now, request and staff for the public. Anywhere from the board just to pull an item, I have one that I want to pull. All right, I'd like to pull Item C nine, the per discussion. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Consent Calendars, Items C one through C eight, C ten through C twelve.
Motion by Vice Chair Danzel, second. Second by Secretary Sloan.
Director Mattis.
Aye.
Director Langin.
Aye.
Secretary Sloan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel.
Aye.
And Cherry Yearwood.
Aye.
All right, back to item C nine, since I pulled it. I just had some, I guess, I was in my shirt with General Manager Larkin. I was kind of, I didn't expect this to come back so quickly and there being like language around it and all that. So I guess it's with your apologies. Because I actually went real passionately and printed it out. The language of adding homeowners associations and things of that nature as eligible events to assume to be compensated for and things like that. I guess my main concern is are we, in this, in this thing doesn't specifically spell it out. There would have to be district business involved with a homeowner's association in order to be compensated. If we go to a meeting and they talk about what they want to color, they want to paint their houses or when they're going to have garage sale, that would be something that I would think would be something to compensate for. If somebody just attends. But I think my, my all I did was if we had something to report out about. Because a lot of times you will, you will show up to those events and sometimes we're on the agenda. A lot of, a lot of times now, the organizations have listed, you know, CARP as an agenda. So when there's someone that even asked questions, and if there's nothing to report, I would say that we probably wouldn't put it on our our list to be, to report out, out of. Does that make sense? Is this new wording sufficient enough to encompass that? That there has to be reportable district business to be compensated? This just says, if you go, I mean, if I'm reading it right, it just says, if you go to one of these meetings and you're the designated, if we pass this, you would be compensated. Well, you will, you're going to report out, right? And so if you, if you don't have anything to say, it's, you're not going to be able to report out. You just can't say, oh, when they gave me a pretty good. And I'm reading the previous wording. Wouldn't the previous wording already encompass anything like that? Where if you went to a homeowner's association, either by invitation or some need to be there? Would you already be able to be compensated for that by adding this language? But in the past, it's been taken off. Well, I mean, reading here, if I take out what was being added in, it says park openings, public hearings, any other activity the board requests a member to attend in advance of the attendance for public resource code. So does that not encompass things like that?
So the existing policy, which is in the black there, is what currently stands. Now, it was not specific to pull out homeowners associations, and that's what the committee we're discussing at the Policy Committee, to include the possibility of having those homeowner association attendance be compensated if they were to, in essence, attend one for district business. That would be something that would be eligible or may be eligible for compensation, depending on if, like what you're saying, if there's a report out. So there might be some additional language we might want to consider to make it clearer as to what you're mentioning in terms of a language, and so everyone knows what that expectation is in terms of what would be eligible for compensation.
Yeah, I tried to kind of figure that today. I mean, if we are invited to something like that, if there's an invitation, if there's an agenda item on there, I mean, I don't know. I don't know how to word that. Like how it needs to look to be compliant or whatever, what is it looking for there? Compensated upon reportable information. Where does it say what reportable information? Come on, Mike. Don't get me serious. If there's a, one of the swings are broken, that might be reportable information. If something looks like it could be a danger, someone could get hurt. If there's a nail that's loose, I mean, that's reportable. Maybe there's something, a crack in the something that people just are tripping over, this is reportable. Maybe it's a community celebration they'd like us to invite to the board or district, too. That's all reportable, I think.
And I answered a couple of questions already, because word was getting around about that cell tower at Prospect Hill Park. People were asking, they thought it was going to be built, they wanted to know where it was going to be. And I told them all it was, was just a site visit. Nothing's been submitted, nothing's been approved, nothing's been talked about. Good. So just kind of put that to bed right now because there's nothing, nothing's going on. No, it just kind of, I've answered those questions. And I, you know, I've got another email from a constituent, because it's, you know, the dog just run free in the park. And so there's, that's a big, major concern. And I hear that a lot, too. So there's issues there.
Okay, but that's not clearly defined, at least that I understand. So did you want to make an adjustment to it now, or do you want to just?
Well, I just understand, there's a, there's a couple of options. We can either table this and bring it back to the entire item for a discussion. We can amend it right now and add additional language and then approve it, if that's what you would like. So there's a couple of options to consider. It is a change in philosophy from what the existing policy is. With that existing policy, prior, the philosophy was that those types of meetings were not, at that time, compensated because that was just a general kind of interest of where you lived as a resident, and if you chose to go to those things, they didn't consider that at the time to be something that they would be seen as district business that you would be compensated for. I believe that was the philosophy when we created the policy in the first place. So it really is a change of philosophy in adding those homeowners association, neighborhood association meetings to a compensation plan for that.
Yes. So some, some of the things I looked at with, with it is, say, one of us, and Director Mattis, I believe you sit on your homeowner's association, correct? So how does that work? Because he's on it, if our district meetings come up, he's on it, he's getting paid for it just for being on that board.
Well, those are two separate. There's, I have a village HOA that I'm on that we have nothing to do with the park. There's the master.
If you sit where I'm, I mean, not, not specifically, but if any of us were to sit on it, I mean, my area doesn't have those.
Yeah.
At, at all. But how does that, that play into it? And then I, you know, my feeling is, if I'm invited to speak, you know, at one of those, I have no problem with that, because I've been invited to speak at a meeting. Like I said, my area doesn't have them, so it really doesn't affect, fed me in those aspects. I don't expect Lincoln Village to call me and say, Brian, you can speak it. And because that's not my area, the way we divide it, not that it couldn't happen, but I know that that phone call is typically not going to come to me now that we've gone into districts. So it's almost, in a sense, that's speaking fee. You know, you're getting paid to go, you're getting paid that minimum salary to go, go speak there, but, you know. And in a sense, I could go to every HOA meeting in the district for, for a month and say, okay, here's my six meetings for a month, I'm done, because I can easily report out something because just because it's not agenda, it doesn't mean people aren't going to talk to me and tell me about problems. That's what I see as a problem. Because if I'm there, somebody's going to talk to me about something that's going on in this. That's the way I look at it. Just as if they were to come meet me in the pub, in public, and talk to me about it. I mean, my first, my first four years, when Rayleigh's was all around Folsom Boulevard, I'd go literally because I'm running a corner, I'd go for milk, and I'd gone two and a half hours because I'd run into the constituent, and all I went for was milk. My life, looking at me goes, where the heck are you? Well, that's my life now. So that's the way I just look at it. If I'm going there, if I'm invited there to speak on behalf of the park district, I have no problem with it. But if I'm going to just go and listen and somebody brings it up to me, I don't think that we need to be paid for it because anybody can do that at any time. And if that's the case, then I should be paid anytime a constituent comes and talks. So that's, or anytime I get an email from a constituent, I should be paid for it. That's the way I look at that.
I don't think that's what the wording is.
I, I agree, but that's, but going to an HOA meeting and sitting there, or a community meeting and sitting there, and I'm not on the agenda at all, and somebody comes and talks to me, and then I report out on it, that's being asked to be paid for. Well, same case, in my, my opinion, somebody sends me an email, and I come and report out on it because that's what they've asked me to do, then I should be paid for.
Well, you're only going to get paid if it's your district that you.
That's, that's what I'm saying. So not that I care, but my district doesn't have those. So right, right off the bat, and I could care less whether I'm paid fifty dollars a meeting or a hundred dollars a meeting or five hundred dollars. I'm going to do my job. But you have to look at it in that aspect that your, you, your area might have three different homeowners. Well, there's three meetings you can go to and get paid for just by talking to your constituents. So how, how do I, you know, anytime I talk to my constituents, it should be the same.
I think the wording has to be changed today to adjust to say that only for reportable information.
I say retain one. Okay. I don't have a problem regrapping a little bit, but at least I, I, I agree, going to a meeting and somebody agrees with the fact that there's a loose board at a park, and you can report out on that. I don't know. I think there needs to be something on their agenda. They need to be, you need to be invited to it in order to be compensated. So how does that look? I don't know.
A lot of times, your, your name, I think your name is about the RCA agenda, which we're going to hear from parks. And you're going to hear from what's going on with the grant and the tennis court and, and, you know, all sorts of stuff, and you're going to report out on that, what they're asking.
Yeah, so like the RCA, they have a, a time when, when I get to report out on what's, what's going on. If, if there's something great, if there's not, then, you know, hey, I'm, you guys have any questions, stuff like that. If it's, hey, I, you guys have questions, I'm not going to do that, but if I have something I'm saying, and I am on the agenda. I think it's, it needs to be important because something about that, too. Like, you're either asked to come or you're on the agenda.
Well, if you're on the agenda, sorry, if you're on the agenda, you obviously should be asked to come, so. I don't, you know, I say the table, look at wording one more month. I don't think it's going to, it's not even a month. It's, it's less than a month because we're going on the tenth next month. So I, it's not even a month that we're talking about delaying, delaying this.
What's the appropriate way to facilitate that?
So make a motion to continue the item to May tenth.
And so in between now and May tenth, there's no work going to be done. They'll bring back the topic and discuss it at the board meeting on May tenth. So everyone understands that, right? We're not having another committee meeting. Well, that's, they're asking to table it, and so that we can't seem to resolve it today, we'll table it and bring it back maybe some suggestions in, on the May tenth meeting to have a further discussion and hope that we can, you know, amend this or change it or, or not, depending on, you know, a little, little bit more time to think about how you want to have it worded. Is that fair? I mean, that's, you'd have to have a motion to table it and record it that way.
If that doesn't pass, that we fix it today?
Then there has to be a motion to fix it, or they're asked, yeah, then we go back and.
So if it doesn't pass, then it goes, reverts back to the original policy. Because we're looking to approve the amendments recommended by the Policy Committee.
Can I ask a question? Can we, I don't have issues with the other things here in this agenda item. Can we pull those things out separately, or does it all have to be tabled?
So there's a couple of things that it attaches to. So if one thing changes, and I believe it's two, three point six, then three point seven would need, or, sorry.
What is the actual number of the policy that we're?
No, that's three point six, two point six.
Okay, so.
Those would be the two that would happen.
Those would have to be the specific ones you're discussing that need to be pulled out. The rest of it could be, in essence, approved this evening with the note that that particular area of the policy can come back and be tabled for the next meeting.
So if I made a motion, like, I made a motion that we approve Consent Calendars, Item C nine, with the exception of the topics around two point six and three point six in the next meeting, would that satisfy a motion?
That works.
All right, I made that motion. A second?
Second.
Motion by Chair Yearwood, seconded by Vice Chair Danzel, Ro Halden.
Director Mattis.
Aye.
Director Langin.
Aye.
Secretary Sloan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel.
Aye.
And Cherry Yearwood.
Aye.
All right. Oh, all right, moving on to the next page. De- presentation, none. Committee reports, none. Public hearing, none. Regular calendar.
Thank you. Item G one is to adopt Resolution twenty-two slash twenty-three dash forty-one to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Cordova Recreation and Park District final budgets and authorize the General Manager to file with the County Auditor Controller and I'll turn it over to present to CFO Matt Nell.
All right, thank you. Cherry Yearwood, all members. So like once in a while, we have to do a leisure amendment. Things don't always go to plan with the shift. This is a good one, though. What we are asking for is the Club of Golf Board has reached the maximum budget ceiling for repurchase of house to goods sold at pro shop. And so there's thirty thousand dollar budget, the original plan, but we've had a lot of demo days out there of golf clubs, and so we're selling golf clubs by order, and also the items that we have within the shop selling as well. So of course, the golf shop has been doing very well and playing everything, so the request is to increase that. Of course, what's tied with that is revenue, so the offsetting account for house to goods is the recent all revenue account. When you go over revenue, so I just went ahead and balanced it by doing the same amount, adding an additional thirty thousand. Our goal is to have that market be beyond that thirty thousand, but for now, that's the ask. So that is the only budget amendment I have so far, is our first one of the year. It's for thirty thousand per house to goods at three quarters of the, at Club of Golf. That's our quarter.
Hope you can have a PowerPoint.
Not as simple enough as having a minute PowerPoint, so.
Do appreciate it.
Any public comment on this idea?
As you know, request.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, is there, since the revenue, and since you guys are selling the retail there, is there, are we getting costs now in wholesale with that, or are we reaching numbers where we can get better prices on the equipment to sell?
Better pricing?
Better pricing. You have brought in to buy it, to resell it.
I'm not sure, actually, versus seeing the goods. I talked to the golf manager that does that. But we have certain accounts already established that we buy from, from my title, Seacoway.
But do you get, do you get better, do you get better rates if we buy more stuff over time?
Oh, yeah, I know we're doing it in inventory, so we kind of stray away from that. We used to have a lot of inventory out there and became more of a hassle having a lot of inventory than just doing it as we go. I know clubs, we definitely do not have that in inventory. It's better to do it by orders. You don't want to have high-end equipment hanging around the golf shop. So no, typically, we just do it by order.
Okay.
Not whole. But the golf balls and stuff like that, we do, we do more in bulk.
All right, everybody care to make a motion. I'm in for the board of directors, adopt Resolution twenty-two slash twenty-three dash forty-one to amend the fiscal year budget twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, Corel Recreation Park District's final budget and authorize General Manager to file with County Auditor Control.
All right, motion signed. Vice Chair Danzel, seconded by Director Langin. All right, Ro Halden.
Director Mattis.
Aye.
Director Langin.
Aye.
Secretary Sloan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel.
Aye.
And Cherry Yearwood.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, G two.
Thank you. Item G two is to authorize the General Manager to execute a two-year contract with print project managers for an amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand, four hundred and three dollars per guide for the design, printing, and mailing of the biannual recreation guide. And I'll turn it over to the Director of Parks and Recreation, Jill Nuns, to present it.
Thank you. Good evening, Cherry Yearwood and members of the board. So tonight, I'm bringing forth a staff recommendation that the Board of Directors authorize the General Manager to execute a two-year contract with print project managers for a not-to-exceed amount of thirty-five thousand, four hundred and three dollars per guide for the printing, mailing, and design of the biannual recreation guide. If you recall, back in February of this year, the Board of Directors approved the release of the request to proposals for the recreation guide. We sent that proposal out to ten companies, and we had four respondents that came back to give us quotes on the recreation guide. As you know, we produce the guide two times a year. So what staff has determined is that we would like to go ahead and honor our contract with Print Project Manager for another two years. It's the best interest of the district. They are our current contractor that is doing the guide as we think. They definitely do a good job, and they specialize in recreation and activity guides, and they come with outstanding references and experience. And they've done a really good job with the design and the print and the mailing, which can sometimes be a little crazy. So staff believes that this company will work within the guidelines and be in timely release of the guidelines and the guide to be efficient with our graphic design and printing for other projects as well. So not only do they do our recreation guide, that's what we have here in front of you is the contract this evening, but they also help us with banners and signs. They, they always done a really great job. So with that, that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Any questions for the public?
Seeing none.
All right, that'll be the end of the day.
Yeah, is this something down the road that we can just do like a mail or a card with a QR code?
Sure, we did a survey a few years ago, and the mailing out of the rec guide was still the number one way that our community wanted to receive the information about our programs and our facilities. So we continue to monitor that. As park and recreation professionals, we're part of a larger organization, the California Parks and Recreation Society, and we always go back and forth asking each other questions, such as, hey, who's still doing the printed guide? Who's doing the postcard? Who's just doing, you know, a virtual guide? And so far, it's still the printing of a guide seems to benefit the community that owns. And each one of those districts, including ourselves, we seem to get more traction and more people to sign up for our programs based on that printed guide. And so both, as you know, both printed, so it gets mailed out, and then we always have the guide on our, on our website as well.
Yeah, I was just going to ask you that, because.
It's always on. Yeah, so what we do is, it's pretty cool. So we have the guide, and then within the guide, we have actually live links. And so if you're on the website and you're going through the guide and you want to click on something, it'll bring you rate to activeness so that you can go ahead and register for that program right away. You have.
Do we design what the pages look like, or is that their responsibility?
They design it. What we do is we give them the content, and then the print project, project managers, person that we work with, will take that information and then start, start plotting it into different areas within the guide. We give them information of where we want it within the guide, so we have the content, the table of contents. Sometimes that puts it around depending on if it's the fall, winter, or the spring, summer guide, but they do the rest of it. And then we go back and forth about a lot, but we go back and forth probably four, five, six. And then we go back and forth about a lot, but we go back and forth probably four or five, six times before you actually see the final product. Or, yeah.
And, um, you don't want to get stuck with that. Two pages that are blank in the back.
Yeah, and, and, and as you notice, we, we do have room, um, for the number of pages. Right now, we're doing a total of fifty six pages. We can go less than that if for some reason we don't have as much content. But what we do is we try to keep it to the fifty six because the more pages, the more money and, you know.
I was at a conference and I think it was, uh, Valleywide, they were passing around their guide. And in the back, they had actually some sponsorship, uh, advertisement that we ever thought about, uh. Going to that route to help subsidize some of the cost of these, um, presenting these.
It's a great question, and the answer is yes. We are in the process. Of putting together some guidelines so that we can, um, have some concrete guidelines that we can review internally as a staff. To decide how we want to move forward with maybe perhaps doing some advertising. As you know, advertising gets sticky and so we want to make sure that we kind of, um, check all of the boxes, add it all, you know, the I's across the T's. Before we decide to go ahead and, and, and accept advertising into our, and into the rec guide. But it is something that we're talking about and hopefully it was in the next year or so we can, you know, bring that forward to the board.
And another, uh. Important item that I, that I believe in is that we supply photographs of our district events and not. They don't use generic images. Or the, uh, publication.
Agreed. That's actually, uh, one of the top priorities this year of our staff is to get out to all of the programs. And all of our parks and take some updated photos. And so staff's working on that, um, actually Patrick Owens has been spending a lot of time out in the field, um, taking some photographs. So we'll have some new updated fresh photographs for the, uh, fall winter guide. Yeah, so thanks for bringing that forward.
Put people in.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything, sir? Uh, I don't. I don't have anything either, so would anybody here to make a motion? I move the Board of Directors authorize the general manager to execute to your contract with print project management and. In the amount not to exceed thirty five thousand four hundred and three dollars per guide. For the design, printing and mailing of the biannual recreation guide.
Motion by Vice Chair Danzel. Seconded by Secretary Sloan.
Director Mattis.
Aye.
Director Langin.
Aye.
Secretary Sloan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel.
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, move on to item G three.
Thank you. Item G three is to approve the ranch neighborhood turnkey park concept plan. And authorize the general manager to instruct. K Hawaiian homes to proceed with the development and construction of the park. And I'd like to welcome to the podium Landscape Architect Christina James for the presentation.
Good evening, Chair Yearwood, members of the board. Um, tonight, I have here in the audience with me, um, the developer's representative, Ethan Melzer. And, um, the, the developer's consultant, Dan Miller, Calla, uh, with Calendar. To help me give this presentation and answer any questions the board might have. Tonight, we're bringing before you, um, the concept plan for the neighborhood turnkey park and the ranch development. And we're recommending that the Board of Directors approve this concept plan and authorize the general manager. To instruct the developer to proceed with development and construction of the park. In June of twenty twenty, park development agreement was executed between the district and the developer. Um, for the ranch development, the ranch will provide approximately eleven acres for a community park. Um. And two point one nine acres for the neighborhood turnkey park that's before you tonight. The future ranch development is located in the southeast quadrant of CRPD. East of Rancho Cordova Parkway and in Stroud, Chrisandby, and there's a location map in your packet tonight. The Board of Directors, um, as in other policy matters, have the final discretion in the final concept designs of the parks. And the sign being brought before you tonight, there is a concept plan in your packets. The design of the park includes play equipment, a shade shelter for picnics. A half basketball court, meandering walking paths and landscaping. The park theme is nature oriented and includes animal prints stamped into the walkway concrete. Interpretive signage and then nature-based color palette. The design uses drought tolerant vegetation, cobbles and boulders to reduce water use and to reduce maintenance. And the staff has reviewed the plan in conjunction with the, the ranch park development agreement and our designing construction, construction standards. The park was designed to fit within the available budget. And the developer anticipates construction to begin in spring twenty twenty four. So upon board approval, the general manager will instruct K Hawaiian to proceed with the design and construction of the park. And as I mentioned, the developer and consultant and staff itself were available to answer any questions board may have.
Thank you. You have a thought for the public?
I do not have any more questions.
Start at the end, script to end?
Yes, I have a question with our last, um. Park that's under development. Um, how many benches are in this park?
I believe there's two. There's three.
Three, and those are the black with the armrest in the middle? Okay, then how many picnic tables are there gonna be? Four, okay. Thank you.
Four. Three benches and four tables, picnic tables.
Okay, Paul, I'm gonna cover it for you.
I would imagine picnic tables probably are and benches are probably. Pathway or something like that. That sound about right?
Yeah, but. The picnic table right here, the shelter, the, the benches are around the area.
Excellent. All right, uh, Director Langin, any questions?
Um. If I'm reading the design correct, there's one trash receptacle, I mean, not one trash receptacle. Says three compartment receptacles, so is that talking about trash or?
So, um, the state is now requiring that we have. The, uh, three bins at some, um, at our larger picnic area and community facility areas. So it's recycle, it's landfill and it's compost. Um, and we have a standard that's from how, produced by Out for Creations, it's a concrete standard. For, we're, we're implementing those in our newer picnic areas and it meets all the state requirements for. The texts and the colors and. Yeah, so that's, that's actually regulated. Yeah, yeah.
Um, is there any others in the?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so, um, that, we, we have been doing one of those where there's a larger picnic area. And then in other locations throughout the park will be just a single steel, um, trash receptacle.
Thank you.
Secretary Sloan, any questions?
Well, I wonder what I'm seeing, like, do I see swings in that play area?
Yes, that's correct.
Um, I know that the, uh. Things that the people like to have in their parks. Another thing I think people like to have is a, be able to walk a walking path. And I'm trying to see if there's actual space around where those trees are on the outside to walk. Is that a path underneath them or is shade the trees are growing over the path?
So there's public sidewalk on the north and southern borders and there's a walkway through the park. Um, there isn't a perimeter path in this particular park.
And you mentioned drought tolerant beds, would that be the pinkish area?
Right, it's sort of that light brown color. Um, and we endeavor to locate that in areas that the public typically wouldn't use anyway, the sort of the edges of the park. And locating the, the usable open lawn areas in as large a space as in the middle. Sort of maximize that chirp area, um, but then create those borders as the drought tolerant shrub area.
And give me one more kind of what's the acreage is?
Two point one nine.
Just more. Thank you. In the sign.
Nothing for you, Vice Chair?
No, sorry, I, I have, uh. No questions either. Anybody here to make a motion?
Uh, I move the Board of Directors approve the ranch neighborhood turnkey park concept plan and authorize general manager to instruct K. Hawaiian homes to proceed with the development and construction of the park.
All right, motion by Director Langin, seconded, seconded by Vice Chair Danzel, roll call vote.
Director Mattis.
Aye.
Director Langin.
Aye.
Secretary Sloan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel.
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we move. Move on to the G four.
Thank you. Item G four is to authorize the general manager to execute the necessary documents to renew the employee health, dental, life, vision. Employee assistance program, EAP. And long-term disability plans effective July first, twenty twenty three. And I'll turn it over to HR Manager Andrea Light for the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Yearwood and Board of Directors. Uh, this is our evening to go over our medical program or a benefit package for our employees of the district. Uh, of course, this is for full-time employees, um, and our first staff report, um, is to renew our medical, um. Our health, dental, life, vision, EAP, which is our employee assistance program. And our long-term disability programs, and that's effective July first, uh, two thousand twenty three. So in the background, um, we're not looking to change very much. We have been offering these programs to our employees for a number of years. Um, we, uh, contracted with three medical providers that includes Kaiser, Western Health Advantage and Center. Uh, we have a dental program and vision and life insurance, which is provided by Guardian. And, uh, a long-term, also the GAP, that's also through Guardian. And our long-term disability program, um, provided by Mutual Omaha. For the most part, these benefits are provided to the employee and their dependents. Uh, there are some additional buy-in options as well. What we're looking to do this year, um, and you'll see the analysis, there are some programs that are changing the plan. Increase their deductibles every year, whether we like it or not. We are considered a small business plan. We purchased this plan directly for our district and it's not run through Calpers. So we're kind of have some limitations on what is offered to us. Um, and the overall expense, uh, or additional expenses this year is three point eight percent over last year. With the understanding that, um, prices will go up and down or expenses will go up and down with the addition or subtraction of staff, um, throughout the year. Uh, this year, we would like to make an amendment to have our, um. Vision, dental and long-term disability and EAP all be provided for Mutual Omaha. Um, Guardian is a great provider, uh, but their rates went up and Mutual Omaha. Um, we shopped, we shopped every year, kind of gave the best rates we can. Um, provided, uh, reduced rates with very similar options. Uh, and in fact, I, you know, I just looked at the dental providers, I think in twenty mile radius, they had over five thousand providers. Uh, their vision is a little bit different where they, uh, cover, uh, some. What's known as like cheaper vision options like lens crafters, um, and some other programs that. Uh, previous guardian did not, there were heavy of the, um, optometrists and, and so forth. Um, and also a good selection, so we believe that the reduced cost to kind of keep us. As cheap as is affordable and possible for us, uh, still offering great benefits to our employees is a huge draw. For our recruitment, having this program that, um, we feel like that this is a good option moving forward. Do you have any questions about plans or anything that's, uh, provided here? I'm happy to answer them.
Anything from the public?
If you don't have any more questions.
All right, uh, Director Mattis, any questions? Yeah, no, I would leave, generally, any questions? Um, with Guardian versus Mutual of Omaha, do they have the same as far as like, so vision companies? So like, let's say there was an employee who had vision company A, is vision company A still offered through?
It, it may not be exactly the same, um, but I know that there are more options through Mutual Omaha. That have more like the lens crafter type of plans. And I heard that some people are like, oh, I figure I have optometrists, like six hundred dollars for glasses. Or if I go to lens crafter, they can get, you know, buy one, get the second pair for a hundred dollars. So I've heard at least a couple of times, um, that that is preferable. It may not cover the exact same optometrist, um, for the same effect companies as Guardian. So it is possible that, um, someone they have to go with a new provider. Under that plan.
And that's for all of the dental vision?
That, that's correct. I think with dentals, since they have so many, I would be surprised. And many of these providers now also have a way that you can go to your dentist and say. You don't, you're my dentist, I only want to go to you, and you start accepting Mutual Omaha. And there's a form and a process to get them enrolled in that program. Thank you.
Secretary Sloan? Vice Chair?
No, no.
Um. I was very happy to hear you say that you shopped around because I was gonna ask that question because in. Previous jobs, Guardian was a company I worked with when I worked at BSP. Um, so, and I was, was happy to hear that you shop around, but then you said something that made me think. Is, why aren't you in Calpers? Can you be in Calpers or?
Um, we, you know, many of us would like to have Calpers because it includes, um. Medical or retirement medical, and right now we do not provide that to our employees. And there are people that we would like to recruit who will not leave their agency because we don't provide it. Now, the plans, the premiums are pretty similar between what we're paying now and Calpers medical. And their benefits are larger, more, more options. But that does not cover the unfunded liability. So we have to invest in covering that medical into their retirement, which is a separate, um, expense. So if we're just premiums to premiums, we would be with Calpers medical. But because of that, that's something that we need to consider. We did, you know, did our home comp study, you know, we felt like. Okay, let's, if, you know, settle with that and it's something that we definitely will look into. Um, but we want to make sure that whatever we select, especially Calpers medical, first month you're in, you're not coming out. Um, that. We need to feel comfortable that that's a reasonable expense and we go for it.
Also, like, when you go into it, you're ready?
Yes.
Uh. Blood oath or something?
Well, from my understanding that every person who's retired from Calpers would be offered the option to elect the retirement medical. From the district, so anyone who's retired will do that in six. With Calpers, they would ultimately offer the retirement medical, um, if we elected to go there. So it's, it's something for us to consider. I've looked into it before, uh, it's something we'd like to look into again. Um, we'll probably at least look into it every other year, certainly look into it every year and, and kind of determine what this costs would be.
Thank you. All right, anybody here to make a motion?
I, I have one more question. This, um, this is near and dear to my heart, but this, this is cover like fertility to families?
It, it does not, and the reason it doesn't is because we're a small business, we're having small business, um, coverage. Um, we really would like to have that, that's been asked of us before. Um, I mean, we really want to care for our employees and that includes that. Um, but it's just not something that's offered in a small business plan. If we, if we went to Calpers medical, it would be something that we would expect to be covered. Anytime you're in a large pool or a large covered, a large business, it's typically covered.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody here to make a motion? I move the Board of Directors authorize general manager to execute necessary documents to renew employee health. Dental, life, vision, employee assistance program, EAP. And long-term disability plans effective July one, twenty twenty three. Motion by Vice Chair Danzel, figure second. Motion by Vice Chair Danzel, figure second? I'll second, second by Secretary Sloan, roll call vote.
Director Mattis.
Aye.
Director Langin.
Aye.
Secretary Sloan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel.
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood.
Aye.
Alright, I'm going to G five.
Thank you, item G five is to authorize the general manager to allow an annual deposit of two thousand one hundred dollars for a single employee and three thousand six hundred dollars for employee plus spouse, child, family into a health savings account, HSA, for employees that select a high deductible health plan effective July first, twenty twenty three. And I'll turn it back over to Manager White.
Thank you. So um, as you may remember, starting in two thousand thirteen, we have um provided a high deductible uh medical plan for both, for all of Kaiser, Western Health, and Sutter. Uh, the high deductible means that um employees can elect to have a health savings account associated with that or added with their high deductible. The district has been providing over the last ten years, well, nine years, we've been depositing funds into that health savings account to help them with their deductible. The combination of the premiums for that high deductible plan and what we put in through the HSA, those premiums and our deposit is still less than our um regular co-pay plan. Employees do really enjoy, those who have it, enjoy that plan. It gives them a little bit more visibility, those funds roll over year after year after year. It's not like an FSA where if you don't use it, use it. But the uh deductibles have gone up considerably over the years. In two thousand thirteen, the deductible was between fifteen hundred and eighteen hundred dollars per person. And now we're looking at deductible starting at the lowest being twenty four hundred, twenty five hundred, twenty seven hundred, depending on the carrier. Again, we don't make that up, you know, the carrier tells what that deductible amount needs to be. But we'd like to increase that slightly from previous years, so all up to this point, it's been fifteen hundred dollars per single and three thousand dollars for employee plus child, spouse, or family, um, and so we're asking to increase that by fifty dollars a month for those employees who have this plan or elect this plan uh to twenty one hundred dollars per single and thirty six hundred dollars for employee plus, you know, family. And still, uh, by increasing our deposit into their HSA plan and the contribution is still five percent less than our regular co-pay plan, which we provide, so I think it's still affordable, it's comparable. Um, and we're just getting them a little bit closer to their deductible amount um for this program. So um, that's what we're uh asking the board to approve this evening, and I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
We have no requests.
Alright, who, uh, is the uh, Dyser, Director Mattis, any questions?
So the, so this three thousand for the family in there, it, it doesn't, it doesn't matter the size of the family.
That's correct.
Because like, you know, I, I just, the last week I went to the ER. Well, I see it, I believe for, for something, so I just know. Uh, well, that's where I'm looking, Calpers, so, um, but yeah, I just know that I could be, uh, very, you can add up. Um, now, if an employee is with you for five years, single or or married, but obviously don't go to the doctor because they're young. Is, when they separate from CRPD, do they have access to those funds, or does that go back to the district?
That's a great question. Yeah, with the health savings account, um, it is a savings account in their name, and our only access to it is to make a deposit. So that account goes with them wherever they go. So it doesn't really cover everything, like you said, it's not every employee wants to have a plan. If they have, you know, larger family, they have health issues, a lot of restrictions, whatever, it's not for everyone. But that, um, we never get those funds back, um, those are specifically for them. And the employee can also contribute to that HSA as well.
So are they, are they cut a check if they separate, or is it, is it just an account that goes to whatever job?
Yeah, they can actually over the savings account, we deposit it into it every single month. And if they leave it, that's still their savings account.
Okay.
We just no longer of course contribute to that if they exit the district.
Oh, okay.
But they can use those funds for um not just their deductibles, but you know, dental vision, um, laser eye surgery, there's a huge list. Um, and I've even read that that can be used for Medicare benefits into their futures, but I've had a few employees who were close to retirement who pushed to the HSA and were putting funds in there themselves and collecting with the denture pad um to pay for um benefits after they leave the district.
Okay, but those accounts have specific prior guidelines of what the money can be spent on, so.
Exactly, and we leave that up to the IRS.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Alright, Director Ling, any question? How about you, Secretary Sloan? Vice Chair? Uh, I have no questions either, anybody here to make a motion?
I'm in motion, thank you. I'll move the general manager. I'll authorize the general manager to allow the annual deposit of two thousand one hundred dollars for a single employee and three thousand six hundred dollars for employee plus spouse, child, family into a health savings account, HSA, for employees that select a high deductible health plan effective July first, twenty twenty three.
Thank you, I have a motion by Secretary Sloan, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Director Mattis, roll call vote.
Director Mattis.
Aye.
Director Langin.
Aye.
Secretary Sloan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel.
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood.
Aye.
Right, last but not least, G six.
Thank you, item G six is to authorize the general manager to execute the necessary documents to renew the flexible spending account, FSA, with Benefit Resource Incorporated BRI for eligible employees effective July first, twenty twenty three. I'll turn it back over to Manager White.
Thank you. Okay, so this is another voluntary benefit that we like to offer our employees, and this is the flexible spending plan, uh, flexible spending account, um, that is voluntary, employees can contribute uh funds from their paycheck, it's tax-free, federal, and state, um, to put funds into this account to use for co-pays. Again, this doesn't go with the high deductible plans, co-pays um, or fees associated with their medical, dental vision, or, you know, mental health, whatever, um, whatever fee that they have that qualify under the FSA. Uh, the district itself, we pay twelve hundred dollars a year, costs a hundred dollars a month to um for the administration of this account, but many employees really enjoy having this money. They get a MasterCard, they can go and pay their co-pays. Now, we have great plans, and a lot of plans have great, you know, very low co-pays, but um, it, we still have expenses with glasses and dental, you know, a root canal can be eight hundred dollars or or more, and this, these funds um help employees pay those uh fees and pay those expenses, um, and put that money in there tax-free. Now, unlike the health savings account that rolls over year after year, um, this plan is kind of a use it or lose it, kind of. The reason why I say that is that some funds can roll over. Is that coming year up to six hundred and ten? Six hundred and ten dollars can roll over to the following year. And we let employees know that, um, so that they can budget, maybe they know they need glasses. You know, they can plan on what they want to deposit into this account. Some people might just deposit six hundred dollars, but they know they don't have any medical expenses that year. Um, it will roll over to the following year. This also provides uh not just uh medical coverage, but also dependent care coverage. So you can put uh an employee who is single or employee filing jointly, can put up to five thousand dollars into the flexible spending account tax-free and use that to re-alert themselves for childcare or dependent care, if they have a, a parent who's in uh dependent care. And that is really popular with employees with smaller children or children in dependent care. Uh, that can save them quite a bit of money. And so we love to provide it for our employees, and uh we'd like to continue to provide it as we have in the previous years. And have any other questions?
Thank you.
No requests from the public.
Amazing, alright, how about the Director Mattis, any question?
No.
How about you, Director? Secretary Sloan?
No.
Vice Chair Danzel?
No.
I have no questions, anybody here to make a motion?
I'll move that the board of directors authorize the general manager to execute the necessary documents to renew the flexible spending account, FSA, the Benefits Resource Incorporated, uh, BRI for the eligible employees effective July first, twenty twenty three.
Motion by Director Mattis, figure second? Second, second by Director Ling, roll call vote.
Director Mattis.
Aye.
Director Langin.
Aye.
Secretary Sloan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel.
Aye.
And Chair Yearwood.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we expect her, move along to H, board of directors, aye?
Thank you, item H one A is to nominate a district representative to run for election to the California Association of Recreation and Park Districts, CARPD, Board of Directors, Director-at-Large or Administrator Representative, and adopt resolution twenty-two slash twenty-three dash forty-two, supporting the nomination and service on the board if elected. The district has been an active member of CARPD, and as you know, currently, we have Directors Danzel and Sloan serving on the board. However, we always bring each nomination opportunity to the board for its consideration. The twenty twenty-three slate of officers has been attached, and you can see that Vice Chair Danzel is currently slated for president-elect. The election is scheduled to take place on May eighteenth at the annual conference in Yosemite. If the board desires to vote on a nomination, the nominee would be asked to submit a letter of interest to me by Monday, May eighth. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, I assume there's definitely no public.
There are no requests.
Alright, wow, alright. So, I, I just want to ask you a quick question, I could do it, so, you're elect, and wha- what's your capacity on this board right now, Secretary Sloan? Are you much on that board? Oh, okay, so since you're not quote-unquote not free, then you're not on this slate, that's what was throwing me off. You're even, okay, that, I was wondering why you're needing to, because you're not up for an election, okay. Alright, well, uh, anybody, any questions on a? I mean, we already, I mean, we already have two people on this board, how many people on the board on? There is fifteen, I remember correctly. Pretty good representation, so, uh, and Matt, two was, two was max now on that board. So you, you too, there you, it used to be unlimited. Um, so basically, all five of us could have sat on that board of directors a few years ago. We went from any number to three, now it's down to two. So it's basically, we're full? We are full, okay. Alright, so that doesn't mean somebody can't decide to, from this board, decide they, they want it. And then run against me. Okay, and so is, if you'd be interested, I guess that would be the question, if anybody's interested. Currently on that board, so I guess I'll look at those two guys, so. So, alright, so we, do we need to do anything if we're not interested in nominating, you ready? We can just move on to item H uh, two, or H one B?
Okay, so no item, no actions to go on that either.
Correct.
Okay. Item H one B uh is for the chairperson to directly appoint two directors to an ad hoc committee with the city of Metro Cordova. So earlier this year, the board did do their appointments to standing committees, including the city two-by-two. On March twentieth, the Metro Cordova City Council appointed two of their council members to an ad hoc committee. Ad hoc committees consist exclusively of less than a quorum and are not subject to public agenda postings under the Brown Act. For our board policies, the chairperson may appoint members directly to ad hoc committees. This ad hoc committee does not replace the city two-by-two standing committee, which remains ready for activation as dictated by the needs of both organizations. And I'll turn it over to Chair Yearwood.
Well, alright, so, okay, um, so I'll make this really simple, I'm just going to appoint myself and Vice Chair Danzel to the ad hoc committee. And that's it, I'm not doing any votes, right, I'm just pointing them, okay. Alright, well, that's, that's all I got to say about that. Alright, item C, H one C.
Thank you, this is for the chairperson to directly appoint two directors to a school district ad hoc committee. And along the same lines, this ad hoc committee does not replace the school district two-by-two standing committee, which remains ready for activation as dictated by the mutual needs of the organizations. This ad hoc will allow for flexibility to meet with all of the school districts within the jurisdiction of CRPD. I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Yearwood.
Secretary Sloan, are you ready for activation? Outstanding, alright, I will do, follow the same suit, I will appoint myself, Secretary Sloan, to the uh school district ad hoc. Alright, so that we're done there, let's move on to H two, board member reports.
Thank you, item H two A is the training report, and that was sent over the last period. So item B is board member reports and comments.
Alright, starting the, into the dice, Director Mattis, your report.
Um, went to, I like the uh, was it Hoppin' in the Park?
Hoppin' Hutton?
Hoppin' Hutton, yeah. My only suggestion is the DJ, when they're playing music loud, then all of a sudden, he gets on the mic and starts talking, it, there wasn't much of a transition in all of the five, six-year-old took off, and the new tone, you know, you don't like it, it's a to get back, there's gotta be a better transition, and it wasn't just there, because we went, it'll be the next week, we went over to uh Fair Oaks, and it was kind of the same thing to you, where it's just, they just start talking. The uh, did that, and then uh yesterday, I went to the Gold River Master Association meeting to advertise the uh positions that we have open that you were advertising, and um requested that they email it out to all the residents, which they did, and I was shocked within an hour. I, I was getting emails, I know you were, so, so, which is good, so I'm very excited about that, so hopefully we get some very good qualified folks in there. Uh, went to the park, Memorial Park ride, uh bike ride and ghosted installation. That was, that was interesting, it was nice to hear the story of the gentleman that passed away and what it was for. And I recommended for them to, I don't know if they've done it, but it'd be great if they submitted that for May, for May is Bike Month, to put that installation back in there. Then the Allstrom Park, we went to the Renshaw Little League, that was the, the city, uh, the PD, and the school district, kind of walk those grounds and see what was going on. And the William H. Wilson Community Tree Planting, that was a lot of fun. First one.
First Amendment, oh yeah, alright, okay, uh, anything else?
No, that's it.
Alright, Director Ling, your report.
Yes, so uh, the community tree planting event at uh WH Williamson Park, uh, that was actually uh pretty cool, learned a little bit about planting a tree, even though I was in agriculture in high school, so hey, you know. Um, but it, it, it was awesome just to see the community in there as well, um, see everyone uh interacting and working. Um, unfortunately, I had to leave early because I had um obligations for myself's Little League team, so. Yeah, that was just a really awesome event to be at, if you're part of. Um, and then uh, opening day for uh Rosemont Little League uh was uh was great, there's um, I want to say it's about a hundred and, hundred and? No, a hundred, I think about, yeah, wait, I don't know. Yeah, somewhere around a hundred and eighty uh players, all the way from T-ball, which has seventeen, which is crazy, because just two years ago, they were like four. Um, to uh the minors, and I think it's uh even a division above that. Um, and so, yeah, just, just great to be out there, see the fields and, and uh be a part of that.
Were there, is that good numbers for them, is that like a, for the Rosemont Little League?
Oh, yeah, I'd say it's really good.
Okay. Yeah, you get them in young. Alright, Secretary Sloan?
You get them in young. Ranch Grove has had like a three-year-old, three-and-a-half-year-olds, and this, they're, because they turned four in like September or something like that, and they're eligible to play. Usually it's four, four to juniors, you're about fourteen.
Yeah, they always have the, the youngest kid, you know, the first pitch of the oldest. She had, so it was kind of a cool event.
By the way, I had a pretty busy, uh, last month. On March eighteenth, I attended the Holy Festival of Color that was held at Village Green Park, which is the Sacramento Teledata Association's, um, festival they have that, that honors the coming of spring. And that's where they take the corn, colored cornstarch, and, uh, paint everybody with it, drawing it everywhere, and went all over the park, and then we had some extra cleanup to do, and they, they did their best to, uh, blow off the, uh, the chalk. Um, a little rain afterward was might have helped a little bit more, but then there was still some work they parked. But it's a nice event, it's, uh, it's well-attended, it's, uh, people all over the region. And, um, it's a very successful, uh, way to, uh, reach out and, and have people, uh, know, discover how great parks are. On the next thing, on March eighteenth, I also had, I spent on a walk-through at the Lincoln Village Community Park. And, uh, with the It Takes a Village, it was a three people that joined me on the walk, I just photographed. I gotta say, you know, when Terry called up about the, uh, the lack of accessibility, it's true, there's a little, there's a, uh, an infield you can't get to unless there's no way you can get there by wheelchair. It's a dated park, it's an older park, I'm trying to get some information on what it actually was, uh, constructed, but it was, um, it's got some areas that, uh, really need to be addressed by the park district, and some simple things that could be, uh, addressed, which, you know, maybe, uh, but, um, I know it's out by the softball field, and the fences, the bottom of the fence is crumbling up. Well, I think that could be an easy fix, to curl it back down, because right now, it's got sharp edges pointing out, with a vault that roll underneath there. That's right on the infield, so, those are small things, I think that's something that we should, uh, go out as, uh, some employees go out there and check out some of the, the areas, it's, 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 it's better years, I think it's really up for some more enhancement. Um, and I'm not just saying that because it's part of my, my area, I, I, it's an older community park, it really needs, uh, some more attention. Um, the next thing I, uh, for my agenda was on March twentieth, I had, I went out and met, met with the Mater Home Association for the first time, and I was on the agenda, and they were very pleased to have me out there. They gave me a list of, I always send these lists out, you know, what do you want to talk about, what we're talking, seeing the parks, I got a little bit of you, they like their, their wish list. And it happened to be on a night that our newly-elected Supervisor Pat Hume was also invited, so there were a good amount of people in the audience, which I was, I was, uh, excited to see, there was, yeah, there was about thirty, forty people there. Um, and it, um, it's, it's nice to be able to focus on these areas that, that really feel, they didn't feel like they don't have any focus at all, they don't, they didn't know who to respond to. There's a lot of things that, that are, are coming their way, I had, talking to Patrick Larkin or Gina, I think there's a monument sign, we don't even have that, Independence, that made it, that's coming, we need people, so. Little things that need to be spruced up, but otherwise, I, I want the Veterans Park, and it's a beautiful park, it's really a nice park, it's, it's, I would say it's, it's upscale to a lot of the older PMRAD parks, this is in the Dome area, I know the Mater area, but it's, it's a newer, developed park, it, it fills it. Um, I liked the fact that they've got, I think they've got a half-court, they have a full-court tennis court, tennis, I mean basketball on one of the tennis courts. And I believe they're putting in the lines for the pickleball also, is that right?
So the basketball court stands on its own?
Oh, is that on my cell?
It's on its own, and there's two tennis courts, and they both have pickleball lines on them.
And let's see, on April first, I attended the Williamson Park, I'll call it Wet Park West, I guess, it's the West Basin Park School. And the preplanting was successful, a nice, beautiful weather, um, it was, uh, always nice to have everything prepared for you, all the whole dug, and just, uh, shovel it up, and, and, um, it was a nice event. Looking forward to the, uh, ribbon cutting, that's later on, next, next one. Well, yeah. Um, and then we've got, the same, the same year, went to the Hoppin' Hunnun in Hagan, and and, I mean, I think there's a way around this, how to start it, and I'm surprised we haven't figured these things out, but whether it's, whether someone stands in the middle of the, uh, of the, uh, the pen, I call it, because they, they rope it off, they have all people waiting around it, all these kids are ready to run in there, and, and there's eggs right, like, ten feet away from them, and a lot of times, the, the problem is there's a gold egg right in front of them, like fifteen feet away. And every parent is already spotted. You get a gold egg, you get a bigger prize, so what happens, what I've noticed is that you got like thirty kids zeroing in on this one golden egg. Well, there's more beyond it, but I think that's, uh, I'd rather see a golden ticket in one of the regular colored eggs, not a golden egg, or them to fight over, because there were, there was an incident where a parent had actually picked up a golden egg. But keep, keeping bad kids away from this, their child, that's not right. Um, but I think if they were standing in the middle of that thing, when you, if you have, uh, some type of a signal or a drop of something, and it hits the ground, and you take it off, literally, then go, and it goes up or something, something like that, or but not just this guy talking and saying, "Don't go, don't go," and I went in, and when I went in to take photographs, they thought, "Oh, let's go, follow him," they started, it was, it was all, and it's over like in seconds. There's like, there's like five hundred eggs up there, and it's like a vacuum, they're gone. They did this about seven times. And they had the pool thing, which is kind of cool, they had the Hagan Union Pool, they had, uh, egg floating in it. Not, it wasn't a baby, like, Michael. What, I was, okay, anyways, but that was, it was a nice event, I love the event, I think I missed the past year for some, I think it's like graduation, getting to know my children. Um, on May, on April eighth, I attended the Breka Easter Egg Summit. Henry was there, and, uh, also the park district organized and supplied some, some of the, uh, golden egg, uh, gym bags and gift presents, and go, no, not from the district? Was that from the Breka organization, or how about? It was all, that's not it, I didn't know that, but we had the same old thing, we had about, um, a little six hundred eggs?
Yeah.
And about thirty kids. You do, you, thirty-five, forty kids?
Yeah.
Forty kids, so you do the math, it was, and, and it was nice, they, they, the kids just looked, uh, you know. You know, they're out there still looking, because there was a point where there's still one more egg, golden egg out there somewhere, so they're all looking. But, um, it was nice, um, and then on April eleventh, I attended the Allstaff Wellness Potluck over here at Hagan Park, and, um, um, it was bringing a couple, bringing a can or something, we did, we did, we won a prize, and I didn't win. But it was nice to have presentation from, uh, First Northern Bank, all of your company, earlier at dinner, other, trying to help people get, um, to clarify answers and possibly become virtual environment. And, um, I thought it was, it was nice, it was a nice event, that was, uh, it was good, and we go around and night there. We collected a lot of candidates. And that's it.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lynn?
Thanks, sir. Uh, March twenty-third, the evening of March twenty-third, myself and Chair Yurman and staff, um, attended the Easter Stills, uh, welcome reception. That, uh, was very, very, talking to some of their board members was very informative, learning some of the things that they do in this community, some of the things that they'd like to be part of. Uh, so that was, you know, great welcoming that organization to, to Ranch Grove, they're just down the street, down by the library, is where their, their office and bar, so they're um, part of this community, and they, they're excited to be part of this community. Um, March thirteenth, I, uh, myself, staff, city staff, police department staff, and, uh, school district staff, and, uh, and Director Mattis, I attended the Allstrom, uh, Ball Field Safety On-Side Walk. Informative, looking at some of the things that were going on out there, listening to some of the things, I know some of the, um, concerns have already been fixed. Um, they, you know, it is a park, and there are going to be some small issues always with, you know, what some people consider to be undesirable people, that they're, you know, it's in a park, it's during park hours, and um, so we need to, you know, be aware that, you know, people being in a park is actually a good thing, even if they don't meet your criteria of what you want there, if they're not bothering you, if they're just there, then they're, they're, they're people in a park. Um, April first, I did attend the Community Tree Planting at, uh, WH Williamson. It's for myself and some of us that have been in this room, that, that piece of property that went across the street, have been begging man for our little lives, I mean, um, hearing the story of, of the Williamson property back to, you know, the deed for that property has President Lingian's signature on it, is a, is a, you know, big, big part of Ranch Grove history, and to see it finally being something is, is great. Um, my daughter came out that day to plant a tree, she's like, every year now, I want to come back and take a picture of that tree, just to see how much bigger it gets, like, okay, you're eighteen years old, and you want to take a picture with a tree, let's do it, so. Um, but, you know, she's very excited about that, and she's planted trees before with other organizations, but for some reason, that one, to her was different, um, which I've been grateful for, um, the staff that helped my daughter that day, thank you. Uh, Jim did a great, great job, you know, working with them and showing, showing those, um, people, students, everybody that was out there, the Girl Scouts were out there, things like that, it was just, it was a great, great community event. Um, I don't know that we could have had any more people up, I think it was them. Um, we, I think we had enough hands out there that day. Um, now the, now, now we just need to work on the funding on the other side, and get that one where we wanted to do. Um, I did also, on March twenty-fifth, I did not put it on here, but I also, with, uh, Chair Yurman, I did, uh, attend the Crowe Girl Softball Opening Day, I'll let him go into detail on that, and then Hoppin' Hunnun in Hagan. I love the addition of the pool. Um, talked about that, I think a year ago, with another project in the pool, now that we have a pool back in that, in that, um, park. It was a great addition, um, little bit of a breeze moving all the eggs inside, but, you know, not a big deal, I think everybody still had.
That's it?
You know, it sure did. Yeah. We, I knew staff that dumped eggs right before, uh, Chair Yurman, and I got out there, and by the time we walked over, they were all on the edge. I saw already, because it was just a slight breeze that pushed them off the edge, but everybody seemed to have a great time, I, you know, people were asking, you know, can they get in, can they, you know, you know, it was just fun to have people who hadn't seen the pool since it closed, um, you know, see the new, new work that is down there and all that, so, and then the Hoppin' Hunnun is, is always a great, great event, it was very packed this year, I was glad to see that we've got, you know, community vendors back out there to talk, you know, talk to, talk to people, I did, um, give one suggestion to the staff, it's just something fun for next year, is that, um, every kid that goes, they need to get a egg hunting license to, to participate, you know, just something to, for, for a couple reasons, one, it's something fun, but two, then it gives us track of how many kids we actually had at that event, and we can give ac- accurate numbers of, you know, how many kids we actually did, and we can adjust eggs per, per that, so, you know, if we've got six hundred kids, and we've got seven hundred eggs, that's, you know, not, not there, so then, at that point, I just thought it'd be, you know, something fun to do, and it gives us a chance to get, meet parents, talk to parents, work on things like that, make sure that rec guide's out there to them, make sure that they know our website, just another, you know, thing like that, is they're signing up for that, that, uh, egg hunting license, other than that, it was a, uh, delightful one, thank you.
Thank you, alright, uh, I should have said earlier. But, uh, alright, so I'll start off with the, uh, Parkmore Bike Ride and Ghost Bike Installation at Allstrom. Um, it was a nice little event, they were very appreciative of us allowing them to do that, I spoke to their angel wall with her husband. I hate to say I was Asian, hope I'm saying that right. Um, it's always nice to go out to those events, because I ran, I always run into people who I don't necessarily know, but they went to school with my siblings, or you such and such as brother, I always think of what to say, I'm their younger brother, I'm the youngest, so. But, uh, so it's nice, I saw somebody my wife worked with for thirty years, now retired, lucky guy. But, uh, it was a nice event, it was a little, little chilly, little, uh, it was a little misty, yeah, yeah. So never rain, but ever, yeah, but it's, uh, everybody's a very appreciative, it was nice to hear about the gentleman, sad to hear what happened to him. Um, and, um, many of his coworkers, friends, that were out there for the ride, so. Um, I also attended the Easter Stills Superior Welcome Reception here at, it comes here at City Hall on the twenty-third. Uh, another nice event, Julie Hagan Belka, who is grandpa, who Hagan's named after, uh, is involved with the organization, is their board chair, I think, this year. Uh, she really wanted to get their presence here in the Ranch Grove area, so they found some, some space to, to get into. Uh, very, uh, engaging, energetic board they have, every one of them have, uh, just had great things to say about what they do and what they want to do in this community. Then, of course, I always run into somebody I went to school with, I haven't seen for thirty years. Uh, and then what, oh, Crowe Girl Softball Opening Day on March twenty-fifth. All three of my daughters played there, I've been a board member in there, and I've been a team sponsor for seven or eight years. And the bike ride was the coldest one I've ever been at, so windy, and it wasn't necessarily cold, but that wind was brutal. Uh, the facility looks great, it's, uh, Rob Borger was commenting during his opening day ceremony that, uh, their numbers are just exploding. Um, he's thinking, this was an all-time record here for him, and next year he expects great big things, so it's nice to see post-COVID, all the youth sports, and find that, looks like they're starting to rebound and, and get into a good place, um. Community Tree Planting Event at Williamson Park on April first. Um, that was a great, a great attended event, I was sore for a couple days after that, because the beast, as I called it, that one little barrel that apparently was a little outside of my, where I should have been using, but, uh, a great event, um. As Linda Budge commented, was much warmer that weekend, because she was at, uh, Crowe Girl Softballs Opening Day, and commenting on how chilly it was. So, did you have Dakota touch the top of the tree she planted, can she touch it?
No.
I was just thinking of a time when I was in high school, you could do trees, and our teacher had us go out there, Mr. Suporn, if you ever had Mr. Suporn. Last day of school, he had us surround these two trees that they had just planted, but I want everybody to touch the top of this tree, that way when you come back in excellent years, you can tell your kids, remember, hey, I touched the top of that tree. Those trees are gone now. They got cut down to, uh, to do some modernization at the school, but, so, but the tree was still there when my kids moved there, so. Uh, and let's see here, oh, finally. Hopping and Hunching in Hagan, uh, it was great to see all those folks out there. Uh, I do like the suggestion about the golden eggs, maybe a ticker or something instead, um. How, yes, how do we get it, maybe somebody stands in the middle and does something, you know, tell them it's time to come in, I don't know. But I think, uh, it was very, uh, definitely well-attended, I mean, by the time I got there, I was, I was almost parked down my cupcake. Uh, that's how far away it was, not being exaggerated, it was a little bit, it sounds better when I say it's supposed to cupcake, so. Alright, so, yeah, you drove right behind me, and there was an open spot, where's he going? So anyways, so, um, the, the pool was nice, I think a lot of people didn't realize what we were doing there, so it was intriguing to see.
It was intriguing to see kids just in their regular old street clothes just waiting into the pool. Uh maybe we should wait them down, I have to put them tired. Just a thought. Put that on the list, you know, don't think liability insurance and like that, but, um so that's all I have, uh so. With that being said. I think it's time to move on to item I, comments by staff on the agenda item.
Thank you, item I one is the district requirement lead progress report for April, and I'll turn it over to General Manager Laura.
Thank you, Kirk Jones. Uh just to follow up on the Ghost Bike uh event. We did get an application, a request for extending that bike to be out at that location for bike length. So uh the bike will remain out at that location. Um and we appreciate them working with us and, and getting that expedited, it's a, for a good cause. Uh we also had a PMRID Oversight Committee meeting on March twenty seven. And as you all know, we're in recruitment for two spots in the Ranch of Cordova area and one spot in Gold River. We have had the announcement out for public notice in the grapevine on April fourteenth. Uh social media newsletter announcements are also scheduled and thank you Director Mattis for. Uh promoting that opportunity in Gold Rivers, we appreciate that. The uh we also, as uh Director Sloan mentioned, we hosted a CRPD All Staff Wellness Recognition Event. So we had the First National Bank who was talking about fiscal health as a part of our wellness. Nora, I do that all the time, don't I? Yeah, if you look at that, we get that same event, they're like, yeah. Anyway, so it was really quite educational, actually. Uh and you know, it's kind of an interesting time to talk about possibly being a first-time homeowner, so it was kind of interesting just to. See what kind of programs were out there and I think the staff really appreciated it. Uh so we have um one of our employees of the month, which or employee of the quarter, I should say. Was recognized in that as Mark Hayden from the Parks Department, he's one of our. Hayden, Hayden, sorry, there's so many, there's so many Marks now, so, Hayden. Um who is one of our parks staff who uh specifically works on park inspection, playground inspections. Uh he's done a fantastic job in uh making sure that these playgrounds are safe. If there are issues, he is reporting them and we are looking to fix those problems. Uh as we can, so I appreciated Mark, the uh department of the quarter was our communications and marketing team. Uh they just wrapped up the last, I think it's the fourth episode of Who We Are. Um and you know, to a future meeting, we will have. Uh an award that we received from the state of California, CPRS, uh honored us with an award for who we are. As um one of the statewide recognitions for a campaign, marketing campaign. Uh for identifying parks of recreation and special districts, so we really appreciate that and we will have. Uh that award and a presentation from the executive director at a future meeting. Uh so good stuff coming from our communication marketing team, they're, they're doing a great job. Uh the star of that next show, by the way, is Andrea White, so. Woo-hoo, yeah, she is gonna be the lead. Uh the other uh things that we had done, we met with the city of Ranch of Cordova, city manager, as well as their HOP team. To discuss uh some of the unhoused issues in the community and how it may impact our parks. So we really appreciated sitting down with them proactively, uh before they did, you know, in essence, a. Uh kind of a cleanup in a, in a certain area of the, the community and wanted to make sure that we were prepared if. You know, they got displaced into our parks, so we really appreciated that communication and that partnership. Uh in working together with them, that, so, uh that's a nice go forward. The uh tenant improvements are coming along at the new CRPD administration offices, we have weekly meetings at this point with the construction workers. Uh the walls are out, they have uh some of the electrical done, so it is still a shell, but the uh. Thermal is up and it's coming along as planned, as you know, we have an extension to mid-June. Uh due to some supply chain issues and so we're still in essence on track from that modified. Original move-out day of the end of May, so we're aiming more towards June fifteen. Uh the, I attended the state of the, also Cordova Unified School District Event, um they hosted. Uh a really nice event talking about the state of the district. And they talked about, you know, some of their award-winning programs, they talked about how uh. They are introducing a lot of uh STEM programs into their curriculum. It was really impressive, it was uh something that our leadership staff, Jill joined and Chief joined as well. Um it was just really good to see that opportunities that those kids have in the school district. Uh that is a very rich education and it was kind of, I was looking at it like, oh, they've had a really amazing opportunity for different. Uh you know, curriculums like the culinary uh uh group that was serving the breakfast actually came from Ranch of Cordova High School. In that program, uh they had a couple choirs that had, um one from Olsum High School, one from uh Cordova High School. Uh so overall, it was a really great event, it was really educational, they produced a really nice, just uh kind of pamphlet in terms of an update for their community, so. Hats off to the school district, we're doing such a great job for our kids in the community. Uh we also, in park planning and development, they've been really bored, so nothing to report, just kidding. Um we have some exciting news, we are moving forward with Exploration Park, finally, woo-hoo. Uh today, I, in the park construction meeting, they had said that they are going out to bid. For construction and they're anticipating the start of that construction on June first of this year. So it's right around the corner, in the ground. Yeah, so um also Grand Line Two Boy Arrested El Sol Community Park Outreach uh will be. Hosted in late spring, early summer, date to be announced, and that was the second of. Uh the two that we had one before, uh in that community park, this time they'll be coming back with, I believe, two or three conceptual designs. Uh based on the community outreach efforts in the first round. Uh to propose to that community and see what their interests are in what they had heard from that first round, so we're excited to see that. Uh the ranch development, we just saw the ranch development uh tonight, which we're excited about moving forward with them. Um we, uh also the Cordova Community Pool Warranty Period. The project's two-year warranty period from the contractor expires on June eleventh, so it's been open for two years, alright. Uh so CRPD staff have been coordinating internally with SWL and Construction to make sure that all issues have been identified. And corrected prior to that June eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Staff is pleased to report there are relatively few items to tweak and that is all ours, so. Uh thank you Laura for staying on top of that and making sure we got everything that we asked for and um. They are accountable and responsible, we had a great experience with these guys, I think overall, I'm very, very impressed with them being on time, on budget. Uh and relatively easy to work with, so uh that was just a fantastic performance, it just is. Nice to have that experience, I guess, right? Uh Gold Rush Park, this project is a turnkey park that will be constructed by Elliot Holmes. And then turned over to CRPD for ownership, Elliot Holmes has determined Hemming, Hemington Construction was a six. Successful low bidder for the park, all permits have been obtained and CRPD anticipates construction begin. On this five-point-one acre park in Rio de Oro development later this month, I've been permitted, so, don't worry. Uh but this will be the first uh park in the Rio de Oro area of our district, so that's exciting. Hummingbird Park, our grading and concrete work is underway at this future two-point-one acre turnkey neighborhood park. Staff regularly coordinate with the developer and construction parks and middles. And the developer is currently working to obtain permits for the shelter and the play equipment that will go into that park. Uh the community poles for Rosemont Community Park, CRPD staff has replanted the butterfly garden. And is using plants donated by the uh Rosemont Community Foundation. Uh the Rosemont Community Foundation and community members will install the community poles. In the butterfly garden on Saturday, June third, like twenty-three. I'm, I don't exactly know what time, but we will send that out to you. Um and that is a workday. Now, after that workday, they're planning on doing a celebration, but not at the same day. So um if you're interested in attending that, uh it's a really cool project and we will give you more details on the exact time that that will occur. Our park naming uh procedures and implementation, uh the applications will be closing this Friday. And so um so far, we are still accepting applications. And uh we will close that out and we will activate the ad hoc committee. Um to us, look at the applications that come in and then look to uh see if they will be put on a list for consideration. For future leaming of parks or facilities. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to our amazing Director of Parks and Recreation, Jill Muntz.
Good evening. Uh Secretary Salona, great news for you. The backstop at Lincoln Village Community Park is now repaired.
It's straight?
Yes. So you can thank Jim and his staff, um we got, you see your fence out there to take care of that, so next time you go over there. Um it's fixed.
Oh, the fence?
Um so we just put a, a, a bar railing at the, at the bottom and then they were able to, yeah, attach it. So that's all taken care of, so great news, appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
And presently, they just got it done. From your board reports now.
In the last two. Jim's not good. He didn't leave and then he started back, Jim got it done.
This is, this is what I'm talking about, because I isn't the partner now, responsibility, I could shoot them, it could be a dangerous thing, but someone could get hurt. Could come back and bite us, I need to into it, they, that parkster is good at getting on those things right away. I really appreciate that.
Exactly, thank you. Um as you all have mentioned, you um went and attended the WH Williamson Park Tree Planting. We appreciate you all being there, but we also want to acknowledge our Outdoor Adventures and Teen Adventure Group tag. Who collaborated with the Sacramento Tree Foundation and other community members to plant beautiful trees at the new park. So the volunteers, just like you, you know, used the shovels and rakes, the wheel by rails and. And did all we could do to get um the trees planted and the, you know, the ground and spread, you know. Get the trees in the ground and spread the woodchips across all of the landscape areas. Um three of our new tag members were led by our new program coordinator Adnan. Um and they were there to volunteer and so we're super excited this program is taking off. It's a really great start and we're excited for the, the volunteer opportunities in the future with these members taking an active role in their local community. And a big thank you to all of the thirty uh registered community volunteers that worked really hard to get this done. And I do also need to thank the park staff because the park staff made it a, a lot easier. For all of us to plant those trees, so thank you to him and his staff for pre-digging the holes before we all got there, great job Jim, thank you. As you guys all mentioned, uh the hopping in Hagen, so I won't go into too many details, but I will have um. Uh I do have better news, uh Secretary Salona again and, and the rest of the board members, we will not be doing the golden egg moving forward, we had already made that decision. To just put that golden ticket into regular eggs, we'll continue to work on the start of the hunt and how best to navigate, you know, how everyone starts to. You know, go into the circle, so we'll continue to work on that, so we appreciate the feedback. Um but you know, we, we spread over fourteen thousand eggs that day, um and had just. It was, the turnout was just amazing, since I've been here and Heather thinks, you know, it's probably one of the largest. Um hopping and hunting that we've had, maybe that's the date change, maybe it's the time change. Um so I don't know, maybe we don't change anything up for next year and do it on the same, you know, Saturday as well as the same, you know, time of the day and we'll. We'll get a great turnout, we were happy with the floating egg hunt. Um sounds like maybe we need to do a little bit more education and bring your swimsuits so that you know you need to get into the water, so. Always good things just for us to, you know, write down and, and work on that for next year's event.
Whatever happened to the real egg that one girl found? The, the girl actually.
It was delicious.
Sunday brunch, yeah, I don't know, okay, well, moving, moving forward.
No, they, they replaced it back to where it was originally located, it was a goose egg, from what I remember, and it was huge.
Yes, they found a goose egg.
So we were sensitive to that and making sure that after the kids dispersed. We put it back to where. No, 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 some kid found like a goose egg like this big. And brought it to us and saying, I don't think this is the golden egg.
Oh my gosh, that's hysterical.
It was big, it was big. Well, we didn't put it back so that we would not disturb, you know, obviously, the nature.
I think we're seeing, you know, um some anonymous goose that sent me the thank you for bringing it in. It was very, very.
We think we had twenty-five hundred there. Maybe when we get our drone after Matt groups the budget, maybe I can count people for business, so thank you again for all of you um. For attending. Uh lots going on in recreation, uh I'm also uh really excited to report out again this month that we had another uh Cordova Career Workshop and Job Fair. Where a total of fourteen participa- uh participants attended the workshop. And of those fourteen who attended, six applied for lifeguard positions, three expressed interest in the cashier position. At the Cordova Community Pool and three expressed interest in becoming a recreation, recre- recreation leader for Camp Cordova, easy for me to say. Um so I'm just super excited that we continue to do these workshops and we have another one coming up on April twenty-ninth, you know. We know that getting staffed is a challenge, so kudos to the recreation staff and the HR staff for. You know, going outside of the box and figuring out how we can get uh people to apply for our jobs, so super proud of that team.
How, how is it going, is there, how many positions do you have open, Bill?
A lot, but we always do, so with the pool, so. When, when you, when it comes to the pool, we could all, we will never, not never, I mean, I hope we get to that point, we never, but we will always accept lifeguards. And swim instructors, because the more swim instructors we have and lifeguards, the more kids we can get in the pool and the more kids we can teach those lifesaving skills. And so it's, it's, I mean, we probably will never get to the point where we're actually full, we're always going to be looking with the staff, because we can just continue to add those swim lessons. And get the community, you know, in the water and get them safe so that they learn how to swim, yeah, so I hope we get to that point, that would be amazing. So fingers crossed that someday we do, so the next couple of pages, um obviously all the amazing recreation programs that we have. We do have a new recreation program over at the Major Sports Center, we are excited to partner with um a vision cheer group. Who is actually going to teach people how to um do some cheerleading, so we already have eleven students. Um from ages five to nine participating in that first session, so again, another brand-new program that's hit the ground running, we're. Throwing in the, I know what Cherry does, so, um and then parks, we got a lot going on in parks, boy, parks is busy, absolutely busy. Um at the, they've been putting up some new signs in the VOZ area, the Ametilia Bike Trail. We um received some comments from some residents that the e-bikes and scooters, uh maybe we're going. Nah, it wasn't you, it wasn't you, they, they didn't call you out, but they, they were um e-scooters and e-bikes maybe going a little bit too fast on the trails. And so we did a lot of research and um came up with um what, what we figured was the best standards. Uh according to um really industry standards as well at Sacramento County, and so we do have these new motorized, no-motorized vehicles. However, the two, um you, you'll see the black and the red tells you the black, what you can do. It's actually green, but the green area, it looks black on your, on your uh photo, and then the red, so. It's basically a twenty mile per hour speed limit for e-bikes and e-sco- scooters and that's. According to the class one and two, if you want to look it up, just look it up sometime, you'll get all the information about class one and two, so. Uh basically, that's what we've decided to do, we'll continue to monitor it and if it gets, you know, to a point where that is too fast, then of course we. You know, reserve the right to change that up if they get slower, but twenty miles per hour is what um so far um has been a good miles per hour for those trails. Yeah, so, um Patrick already mentioned the Rosemont Community Park and the Butterfly Pavilion, um. And then we have tree stump removals. Oh boy, I, I think we're done, so I think, you know, I think for the most part, Ulster Park was cleaned up, it looks really great, the stump was removed, that was quite the, the task. As well as Gold River, that's really big stump, so Gold River Park, Ulster Park, all clean, ready to go, so. Uh we've just got, we're, we, we think we've gotten all of the trees at this point, but there may be still a few out there, but we continue to, you know, look at the vitality of our trees. Um we actually. We actually are going to take down a tree at Ulstrom Park that we've just identified needs to come down because it is at that point where it's on the border of, yeah, maybe it's dead, maybe it's not, but we're going to caution and err on the side of safety. We're going to take one tree down at Ulstrom. That's right there on the right field line of, of the ball field. But we continue to do that. And again, just like Secretary Sloan has mentioned, you know, we see something, say something and we'll, we'll get our staff out there to take a look and make sure that we're providing the safest environment for people to enjoy our parks. So Jim.
Is that the, the tree is right there on one of the dugouts?
It's the one that's further down.
Oh, further down.
Yeah, like a little bit more out in right field. I just, yeah.
Yeah.
So they're, they're both, they're both going to the, the budding, the, the trees are still budding, right? So there, there's still some trees bud really early in spring, but some take a little bit longer. So the, the one that's not budding is going to, that one's the one that's going to, and Jim, please correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the one that's the healthy one. The one down further is the one that was on the border line and Laura Taur and I have talked with the city about it with even the renovation of that park and, and that was one tree we had identified at that time. If we did need to take that tree down because we were extending the fence that that was one. So it worked out anyhow. So we're just going to go ahead and take it down for safety reasons. Yeah.
Oak?
Jim, I don't. Yeah, it wasn't an oak for sure, but I'm not sure what type of tree it was. Okay, so not an oak, but we can get back to you on exactly what type of tree. So, yeah, so we're taking that down. Some good news.
And the one on the dugout, close to the dugout will be trimmed for safety because it is still alive. It's not a dead tree.
Correct. Yeah.
For daily trees. Not, that's not going.
We, yeah, we, but every time we remove a tree that hasn't fallen down on its own, we absolutely have daily tree or sometimes we even work with the city of Ridge, Cordova's Marvellous as well. Yeah, we don't take, we don't take down trees just because we, we think that they're dead. We definitely get the experts to come in and tell us what we need to do. So, yeah. And then we've got a couple repairs at Stone Creek for the sports field, just replacing some of the worn out forests. In marketing and communication, they continue to be crazy busy. And then we've decided to put in some stats about our work order system here. So during March, CRPD received 20 work orders through our new work order management system. 15 work orders have been completed and there are any work orders are in progress. So we'll continue to give you those statistics each month. And then we do, we're in the process right now of interviewing for our new admin specialist who will be the person who will be in charge of this system moving forward. So we'll continue to look at the system and see how best we can operate it. And we do have some new signs going up in the parks, probably in the next, I'd say, next three or four weeks. That will also help to let the, the community know that we do have this work order system, but still going to take a couple of months for us to work out all the things, especially when the new person comes in. That's going to be one of her main job responsibilities. So we're excited for that. And the golf course is still, you know, plugging away even though we've had some rainy weather. We're, we've taken the turn. We did get an opportunity to go out there and play on our day off last Friday and the course is looking excellent, looking really good. So if you have an opportunity you want to play or if you don't play, stop by the golf course right now. The aeration of the greens is coming up, which is, which is just something that, you know, we've been letting over the last couple of years, it really makes a, a big, big, big difference. And it's something that hadn't been done for a really long time before Chase and Vijay made the decision to aerate those greens. So we'll give some discounts to some of our golfers if they decide to play during that time because if, if you are a golfer, putting on an aerated green is not fun at all. It's very frustrating. But we're happy to announce also that the Boys High School Golf started their season this month. And this year we have four schools utilizing the golf course and driving range as their home course, including Caplo Christian School, Rosemont High School, Hiram Johnson, and Balsam High School JV. Yeah, good stuff. For invitation, we've got several events coming up in the next month or so. We've got birthday coming up this Saturday, April 22nd, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM over at the Lincoln Village Community Park. Super excited for this birthday and Senior Resource Fair. It's our first time we're coming, the two events. Should be a really great turnout. So hopefully you can join us. The CCC puts on their awesome, amazing Kids' Day in the Park, which is Saturday, April 29th at Hagan Community Park from 11:00 to 3:00 PM. If you haven't been to that, that is just a really great event that the CCC puts on. Community yard sale, Lincoln Village Community Park on Saturday, May 6th from 8:00 to 2:00. And then the CCC hosts their second big event of the year, IFES in Winds of the World at the Village Tree on Saturday, May 13th from 5:00 to 9:00. And then a popular event, the Mermaid Convention is back. Most, some of us will be up in Yosemite, but if you're not up in Yosemite for the CRPD conference, if you want to stop by the Cordova Community Pool, they're going to be there Friday, May 19th from 8:00 to about 12:30 and Saturday, May 20th from 10:00 to 5:00. It's pretty cool. If you get a chance to stop by, enjoy that. And then Danielle included the Kids' Day flyer in your packet that just tells you all about the Kids' Day event. So take a look at that. And then you'll also notice that our logo is on top of the flyer there next to the Cordova Community Council and the Sacramento County logo. So was that, that, this ever whole?
Sure. Oh, yes, I, I wish. True, feel free. Did I miss it? House Mather Sports Complex. Did I miss that third one?
You did not.
Okay, then there's a reason.
Well, I can give you an update.
Okay.
So we, the, the Mather infield's are now complete. They, we are playing on them, but technically we, we haven't signed off on the notice of completion. So that's why we haven't run it forward yet because we still have that process. But yes, we were, we got delayed about two weeks. We had to, only one tournament had to get canceled out and it was right before Easter, so it, it, they had found another spot anyway. So that worked out. And then our adult softball league was just delayed by one week. And so we went out that Monday, it was April 10th, if I'm correct. But we were able to start the adult softball league. We've got a couple of punchless items that still need to be taken care of, but it doesn't affect the, the play. And so the teams are really enjoying it. It's different. It's, it's, the color is different, the feel is different. But if you get an opportunity, certainly head off to Mather and see the new turf. We also did add on some some new white lines in the outfield because once we laid down the new infield, you couldn't see the outfield lines. It was like, oh no. So we went ahead and added the outfield line. So it looks good, but as soon as the, it'll, it'll be a next year's, next year's, next week's board report, next week. It is supposed to be next week though. It's big time. It feels like it's next week. I'll get some, I will put some pictures in that and show you, but yeah, take a, take, if you get a chance, head on out there. It's pretty cool.
Sure. I have a question. Remember there was an issue with the Burchmont Community Park tennis court with the veneer that we put on the surface and it was starting to peel off or crack off before, right after we applied it. What is going on with that issue? Have we resolved it with the vendor?
I'll let General, General Manager Lark can answer that.
Sure. So we have asked that the contractor fix it, of course. We had a lot of rain. They have re, kind of given us an idea of how they would plan on fixing it and we disagreed. And so we are now getting an expert opinion from the US Tennis Association to give us an expert opinion on whether their proposed fix will be appropriate to get what we paid for. And so there's a little bit of a delay. They are out and it's probably about 15 more days. It was a 30-day report back to us on their expert opinion. From there, we will work with the contractor, the vendor to, you know, fix the, the problem. But we want to make sure that what they're proposing to be a fix is going to be what ultimately we paid for and also what will be the standards to which we expected. And so we're hoping to avoid any further, you know, delays, but at the same time, want to do it right and walk away from it where the community obviously gets what we were expecting for them to get. So it's a little bit delayed because of that expert opinion, but I don't want them to fix it and then all of a sudden, two months from now, we're back again with no warranty and we're in a worse situation. So there's a bit of a delay, but it's for a good reason.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yeah. And thank you for asking. I thought my question was going to ask. So with that expert opinion, was there to be a number of costs for that?
No, we have a great relationship with them. Actually, Jill has a really great relationship with USA Tennis where they're, in essence, what, what would you call it? They're comping us on that legal opinion or that professional opinion so that we can make sure that we're obviously getting that. So no, we did not get a a payment for them to come out and assess that property.
Very good.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. I just real quick want to say, as I drive through the district, spring is definitely the best time for our parks. In my district, I mean, I, I benefit from almost every kind of, the oldest one is probably about 20 years old. I thought even going into the older parts of the district, I went to a Federals building the other day, it looked great. I sped through Gold River, just kidding. So everything's looking great. Everybody, just wanted to acknowledge that and how great the parks look even after our terrible winter of destruction. And everything is just looking great. So I just wanted to compliment everybody on that for all their hard work. Thanks. That is it. I think we will move on to Jay, information item.
Thank you. Item J1 is Articles Correspondence and Public Outreach. We have three articles. We have the public notice for the PMRID Open Application Period. We got a very nice email communication from SMD complimenting our staff for their work on the item C12, easement item. I included a copy of the PMRID minutes that were approved at our last meeting. And we have two newsletters. And then item J2 is your calendar. I did go to Secretary Sloan asking about the invite that all the board members were sending for the Sacramento Valley Livestreamers River Museum 50th Anniversary Celebration that is also on May 20th. And we will be doing a resolution to honor that at the next board meeting. And General Manager Larkin will be presenting that to them at their event.
So are we going to be rushing down with the news, and then?
Yes. I'm leaving early to make sure that I'm there to present the rest.
It's, it's in the afternoon. Okay, all right. So we're good there? All right. So I guess we'll move on to them. I have a day, closed session.
Thank you. Before I read the items for a plus session, I just want to announce to our visitors on Zoom that the way that we run this process is we end the Zoom call for all attendees and then we attend a closed session and we restart the Zoom meeting when we reconvene. So we have two items in closed session and meeting. Item K1 is a complaint with legal counsel for existing litigation pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9. Rosie Reyes versus Cordova Recreation and Park District. This is Sacramento Superior Court Case Number 34-2020 that is number 0277979-CU-PO-GDS. Item K2 is a liability claim pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9. The claimant is Audrey Smith and the agency claiming against is the Cordova Recreation and Park District.
All right. Thank you for your job. All right. We will adjourn to closed session at 8:36 PM.
Recording and prop.
All right. We are going to return from closed session at 8:56. All right. Item K1, there is no reportable action. Item K2, the board voted unanimously to reject the light plane. All right, move on. Ready to move on to recent testing, what are we doing? We're adjourning. All right. And so the next break, we'll read it to the Board of Directors of the Cordova Recreation Park District on Wednesday, May 10th, 2023 at 6:30 PM. You can take reschedule for 5:17, 2023. All right. Good job, team.